I'm gonna call to order this city council work session being March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, three P M. Invocation will be given. Okay, so we're gonna need a voluntold. Councilman Connaughton, would you like to do the invocation in place of Councilmember Haney? Everybody wishing to join us in the invocation can do so by rising. Counsel, will you join us? ABC it. We're gonna move on to item three. Do I understand right that the gentleman that was gonna lead the discussion is not here?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Mr. Tony Searls contacted me last night. They had a medical emergency and they had to fly out to Dallas with his wife. So, um, I wanted to just, I guess, table it for, or postpone it for the next work session when he comes back. But I do wanna just share just a few, um, facts that he shared with me. I had the opportunity to go on the radio this morning on KCRS and talk about this, because this is a really big issue. It's just staggering the number of, uh, of deaths that we have, deaths related to fentanyl. One of the things that I found out was it's fifty times stronger than heroin. And it's now the number one leading cause for overdose deaths in the United States. It takes as few as two milligrams to, uh, to cause a life-threatening situation. When I looked that up to see how, just exactly how, how much two milligrams was, it's an almost immeasurable amount. There's really nothing to compare it with, if you compare it with gunpowder. It's like, um, two grains of gunpowder. So it's a very miniscule amount that it just takes to be, to be, uh, life-threatening. The one that really catches my eye was the, uh, the national overall, uh, overdose rate is fourteen point three people per hundred thousand. Here in Ector County, it's twenty-eight point one. So, um, it's definitely a big issue here. So I, I'm looking forward to, uh, Mr. Searls coming here to, to speak about this, so, um, because he's got a lot of good information. Also, and how we can distribute Narcan, uh, which is one of the best ways to combat this while somebody is overdosing. So, yeah, we would just, um, table it so he can come back in two weeks and talk about this and give more information about it. I think that's the right.
Who's Tony Searls?
Tony Searls is, um, he has an organization, Freedom for Life, um, and they, uh,
Is it nonprofit?
It's a nonprofit organization.
They're making Narcan available to the community?
Yes, sir. And I will mention right now, just so we can get this word out, that, um, Narcan is available, free to the public from that organization, and then also from Living Free, that's the first assembly, the Straight Line, Straight Line Foundation, and Turning Point.
So, three organizations?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we need a motion for, uh, tableing this item for the next, uh, work session will be in two weeks.
Yes, Mayor, I moved to,
March twenty-eighth.
Yes, I moved to table this, uh, this discussion to the, uh, next work session.
I have a motion for table in item three by Councilmember Mata. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Swanner. All in favor, indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, indicating by saying nay. Motion passed, you ask me. Item three will be tabled for discussion on, uh, three P M, uh, work session, March twenty-eighth. We're gonna move on to item four, discuss authorized in City of Odessa Police Department to accept Texas law enforcement officer standard education funds at the ELOCE. Uh, Chief, Chief Gurke.
Good afternoon. Uh, this is simply a request to accept funding in the amount of eight thousand one hundred ninety-three dollars and ninety-one cents, um, from the Ticos Leos funds. Those are, uh, sent to us every year. Uh, they can only be used for training and education of certified police officers. I, I do believe, if I'm not wrong, the fire department, at some point, will get a, uh, an amount also.
But not these, right?
Not these.
Sounds good. Counsel, any questions? Gurke, Chief Gurke, anything else?
That's it.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We're gonna move on, move on to item five, discuss the purchase of MR-compatible water meters. Miss Semeniego?
Water meters?
Water meters.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
This is the, asking to purchase fifteen hundred three-quarter inch meters complete. And that's a total of four hundred and eighty-six thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Also with fifteen hundred endpoints with registers, comes up to the cost of two hundred and eighty-six thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. And two hundred three-quarter inch meter body onlys, uh, for a total cost of twenty-six thousand six hundred. And this will be a total cost of seven hundred and ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. And this is to, it's a yearly estimate to keep up with the demand on the housing and repairs. This is averaging six to eight months for us to get them, so we need to get these ordered as soon as possible.
How did you come up with that number? Is this is on demand, or is this estimation, or are you going off from the, uh, the last annual purchase?
We had a meeting.
You had a meeting?
Yes.
Just imagine that.
Between, between billing and collection utilities, and we came up with the cost of, uh,
So this is based on, uh, prior purchase, uh, requests and usage, both new and, uh, and repairs?
Yeah, right now, we have three thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine meters that do not read. They have to go do manual reading. So that's what the endpoints and registers are for. And then, we estimated that, how much we have already spent this year, and gone that way.
City manager, you tell, tell me, you go say, right, we have over three thousand meters that are out there installed. They are not accurately, uh, reporting, uh, consumption?
They are accurate, but it takes a, uh, manual read to get those read.
So this will be able to help us to facilitate more of, uh, Bluetooth?
Yes, sir.
Good.
Yes.
Good, good, good. Okay.
So that'll take some of the strain off of the employees also, having to go out and manually check it.
Yes.
Very good.
But the thing is, is that the, the equipment will pay for itself.
Right.
Because we'll be able to get, uh, you know, we don't have, we don't have to, you know, put the, the manual, people don't have to go out there and drive.
Right, yes.
Okay, so, um, we're estimating six months, six months to be able to get them in? And then we have the install, uh, what's the cost estimate for the installs? Do we do it on demand, or do we do it systematic? How are we doing it, City Manager?
I think it's on demand, isn't it, Tom? As, for your stall?
It's on demand.
The install, yes, part, the new installation will be taken, taken care of by, um, distribution. They'll do that. And the replacements will be taken care of by billing and collection.
Okay, okay. Alright, so we're moving on then. That's very good. Counsel, any questions on that? Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
We're gonna move on to item six. Oh, this is our favorite part. We, uh, we, uh, we need to remove from table presentation on impact fees. These impact fees, okay, so, um, like this last work session, we, we ran out of time. So we need a motion, who made the motion? Do we know? Okay, so we need a, a motion to remove, um, from the table, item six.
So moved.
Have a motion by Councilmember Mata, second by Councilmember Thompson. All in favor, indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passed, you ask me. Yeah, I'm gonna go take a nap while he does this.
Go for it. Go for it.
So, uh, what we removed, basically, this is a, uh, an education on how impact, the methods established by Texas law to recover portions of this community infrastructure and development costs of the beneficiaries of the development community. Mr. Kerr?
So I gave you quite a bit of information the other day, uh, and I have it here to pull up. I did in a, a shorter version on the presentation, if you would prefer to try that.
Yes.
And, um, so I'll pass these out to you real quick.
No, the O A's not here. We need this disseminated.
So, one of the things that I've noticed, I think, is that we lose track a little bit of what the impact fees really are about, or, or affect versus the other things. So we, we put a lot of infrastructure in that has nothing to do with the impact fees. The developers put in a lot of eight-inch, twelve-inch lines and things like that, that are part of the development of the interior portion of their subdivisions. Impact fees are for the major infrastructure. And so an example, uh, maybe even different from here, but, uh, say, the northeast part of town, um, where we have, uh, say, Parks Bell growing and that type of thing. The city limits has reached the extent of how far we can press water out there. We can't grow out there anymore without putting in twenty-four inch transmission line and an elevated tank. We've known this, we've, we've known this for a while. Um, we've contracted someone to design it, but we've been on hold with the county issue until we're told to move forward. But, so, but you can't expect the developers, when they come in, to be able to build twenty-four inch lines and elevated tanks for you. Very often, unless they were just doing something massively huge, right, and that's just not common at all. So, um, a developer may be doing a certain area, but you couldn't expect him to put in that large infrastructure. So what happens is on this major infrastructure, the city is expected to go in and build that infrastructure at the rate payers' costs on water and, and at taxpayers' costs on streets. And so impact fees are a methodology that's developed through state law to help apportion a part of that cost to the developer, so that he still contributes something that should be proportionate to how much he adds to the demand. So if it's a twenty-four inch line, he's not gonna need twenty-four inch line water. He may only need six inch, eight inch, whatever. So, the state established this method, it was really to, uh, really to be to the advantage of the developers as well as the communities. In the sense that developers would go to a lot of cities, and some cities might say, hey, you need to pay for half that line. And the developer, I'm, I'm not, the developer goes, well, I don't really owe that much. But he might come to another city, and they say, you only have to pay a little bit. So the state tried to establish a method of calculation that says you can't apportion more cost to them than would be appropriate. So, that's kind of the thing that I'm trying to kind of say in the front, is that, uh, as, as you will see here in a little while, our, our fees, as we establish them, are about ten percent of the actual cost of that infrastructure that goes to the developer. Ninety percent is gonna be paid by the, uh, the rate payers or the taxpayers, depending on the infrastructure.
Ten percent of the overall cost?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, um, this slide, uh, just to kind of give you an idea how some of these calculations are built. So this is a slide that shows the type of property development is expected in the study area. So some of this is industrial, some of the, a lot of this is residential, as with most. And so this is part of the plan. And then they look at how much is population gonna grow, projected in that ten-year period, because this is a ten-year forecast only. That ten-year forecast of how much growth is going to occur, based on those types of developments. And that way, they can start to apportion those costs that you are going to attribute based on, so, most industrial properties may have a certain amount of water demand, but may have a lot more roadway demand. Whereas some, uh, commercial developments will have quite a bit of roadway demand, maybe not a whole lot of water demand. Residential, you're probably gonna have a little more water demand for the size of your property and everything than you are roadway demand. But as a density, it changes, right? So anyway, this just kind of tells you, they start out by looking at land use, and then they look at population projections on that.
Is that, is that, uh, what would be like the Ponderosa area?
Uh, the Ponderosa area is on here, as shown as residential, uh, but Ponderosa is outside the city limits, so.
Oh, okay, so, that's.
The impact fees will not be attributed to Ponderosa area, because it's outside the city limits.
Thank you.
And they don't use water and sewer, so, from the city. They do drink and, anyway, so, uh, so this, this is a graphic. In the impact fee study, these are the water system improvements that were projected, that would be needed for growth that is recognized by the, uh, developer community and the impact advisory committee. And so you'll see on that, up on the northeast, uh, there's a twenty-four inch, that line going at the very top, that's going left and right. That's the twenty-four inch transmission line out to where you see an elevated tank, that big red blob. That's a two million gallon elevated tank, and then that twenty-four inch drops down, uh, and comes down and ties back into Fodry, uh, the line we have up Fodry. But all that infrastructure is part of the calculation. How much does it take to build that infrastructure, expecting to, uh, have growth in ten years? That would need at least portions of that infrastructure. So we have the same thing for wastewater. You'll see on here, that lower right corner, I'm just pointing to ones that y'all may have heard of and stuff, but that's line P that's coming from the during, come down at the bottom. This, uh, configuration is slightly different than what we built, but it's the same, uh, service area. So line P comes up actually to business twenty, and then comes over to Fodry. And then line Q will extend off that. They'll start construction in the next, within the next month, with Q going up to the, to the north. Roadway under the legislation is a little bit different. It has to be within a six-mile radius. They will not, so water and sewer are just considered a, a, a complete system for the whole community. This is, this is common, this is part of the way the law sees it. You know, most of us have single plants of our size, you know, you don't have two or three plants. And so everything is really pretty much spread amongst all the properties. And impact fees are only assessed to properties that have never been platted, or never been developed, have never had a building permit on them. So, uh, it's for, and it's for, they, they look at vacant lands inside the community, as well as lands that are completely vacant outside, right? So you might have a lot or two or three in town that never had been developed, never had a house on them, never had anything on them. Their impact fees are assessed to them, because their demand is new. But roadways are done based on a radius. There, I think the general impetus is that that road is not really gonna be used a tremendous amount by somebody on the southwest side, if it's way on the northeast side, that often, or something. So, that's part of the legislation. So when you look at it, we have three regions in Odessa. Uh, the one on the left, number one, is the north part of, of the city. You'll see roadways assigned in there that are Dawn, uh, Yukon, uh, uh, as well as sixty-first is on there, Grandview. And, uh, there was a study to be done on J B S routing, but these, uh, so those costs are in that, in that assessment for that area. Area two, which is the south part, you've got Murphy. I think we have Dixie, South Dixie on there, uh, there may be a little bit of J B S on there. But, uh, so those are the roads that are added into that area. And then area three, which is the northeast, east and northeast area, uh, you'll see, uh, Yukon. Uh, I believe that's Parks Bell Boulevard up there, Joe, um, kind of loops around up there, uh, Fifty-Sixth Street. And then, uh, down in this lower right area, those are some county roads in Yukon, uh, maybe Dorado, um, but, so those are the roads that were picked out as needing, be, potentially needed, uh, to either be new roads or expanded. Fodry's on there. Part of the money that we've collected as impact fees has gone to Fodry. Any impact fee we collect can only be spent on the projects that you've adopted through the impact fee. So, any money we get can't go to do something on a street that's not here, Eighth Street. We can't go rebuild Eighth Street with any of this money, because it's not part of the projects for growth. So this kind of gives you a breakdown of the monies, uh, associated with this. The, uh, far left column is the total cost of those projects. So, for roadway, the total cost of projects, if we, for all of them, would be two hundred and fifteen million plus. For water would be fifty-five million, and for wastewater would be eighty-nine million. So the total cost of all this infrastructure under these projections is three hundred and sixty million. So the state says the most you can recover is, how much growth do you expect to happen in the next ten years? We don't expect all the growth in this area to happen in ten years, right? It's not gonna be fully developed everywhere. So, the projected populations come into this number, and that becomes how much the maximum you can charge. And, so the maximum recoverable amount for roadway under state rule would be seventy-one million, just under. Water, five million, wastewater, ten million, total of about eighty-five million. And those are about twenty-three percent overall of what the overall real construction cost looks like. Now, a, a fee structure was adopted by the council, um, we wanted to be below Midland, and, um, so we adopted a fee structure that was below Midland, taking into consideration C D B G areas for some things and that. So the projected, based on those adopted fees, and this is just a projection number, it's a little difficult to actually nail down, but is expected to be around thirty-five million. And so thirty-one million of that would be roadway, about two million in, in water, and about two point three million in wastewater. And it ends up about ten percent, uh, that projected based on the rate structure that was adopted. Does that make sense?
Any questions?
So the next slide is the impact fee development, the actual fees that are, that make up that thirty-five million, let's say. And so for roadway areas, you're gonna have a different assessment, because each area has a different amount of roadway work. So, uh, area one, two thousand seven hundred and twenty-six dollars per vehicle mile. A vehicle mile can get real confusing. It is a demand unit. So, a house may have, and I'm sorry, I may not be giving you the exact number, but a house may have two vehicle mile units a day or something, right? But a commercial thing, uh, property may have fifty or a hundred or something like that. Depends on the size of the commercial development, what type it is. You know, uh, filling stations may have more demand in some places, those types of things. And so, these are all based on national numbers for how much traffic a certain type of property may generate, and those types of things. But so those are the unit numbers that go for each of those properties. The water max fee is, uh, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars for a three-quarter inch meter. And these are the max fees that you could charge, and eleven hundred and sixty-two dollars for wastewater. But these are not the fees that you adopted. The next sheet shows you the fees that you adopted. This is not complete. If you look at the ordinance, it'll show you tables that have a more complete listing. But say on wastewater, for a three-quarter inch meter, the max fee could be sixteen sixty-two. Sounds a little different than my other number, so one of those is off. I'm sorry about that. Uh, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars is what we charge residential for a three-quarter inch meter. In the C D B G area, it's four hundred and fifteen dollars, and non-residential is the full fee. I think that eleven sixty-two should be sixteen sixty-two. That's on the previous page, I'm sorry. Three-quarter inch water meter for water, seven seventy-eight, et cetera. And so each of those will tell you what they charge. And then when you get into roadway, the, uh, numbers are demonstrated there as well. I think the council elected to have areas one and three have the same charge, no matter which area you're in. Uh, one and three have the same assessed value, so that I guess we weren't promoting specifically development in one area and not the other area. Although their roadway costs may be slightly different, so.
So, Tom, so, these fees right here on this impact fee development are what's, are the base fees, which, which are used to calculate the total impact fees on this worksheet?
Yes, sir.
To go to, okay.
Yeah. So that, that next one is the worksheet that you would use to assess it, and, uh, Joe, we're, uh, apparently coming up in a minute, if I can help here. So, we go to the website. So I just, when I'm going, I just use to say, Odessa, do a search, Odessa, Texas, impact fees. And that'll take you to our resource page. So this resource page has a lot of what I've provided you in the last couple days, a couple meetings. So you'll have your impact fee ordinance here, the impact fee study, so you can see where all the information here comes from. And then there's the calculation worksheet, and so. Now, I don't know if y'all want to walk through this specifically, but, um, so it, basically, it's asking for the development name. Project representative, often that may be the engineer or someone else that's representing the owner, uh, who the owner is, case number. When we're building it, we'll have a case number for it and a date. The service area is one of the first things you need to select if you're going down to the calculation because of roadway. So are you in the north part, or in the south, or you need, so that's one, two, or three. And what that'll do is define what your fees, which fees it picks up from down the line. So you have a down arrow, and you pick up service area three, so. And then, uh, then you have, so it's not applicable anymore, but at first, there was a year, uh, exemption if you had a residential subdivision, and that subdivision had been platted, final platted before September ninth of twenty-one. And so if it had been platted before twenty-one, you could build lot, on your lots of that plat up until September ninth of twenty-two, without having to pay impact fees. But once the September ninth, twenty-two occurred, that's no longer applicable. Everybody pays the impact fees now. So they've got a building permit, a C D B G eligible, so the C D B G, again, will throw you into a different rate calculation than the others will. So the two things here that'll affect your rate are, are the service area and the C D B G. Then when you come to land values, this is where you'll put in what type of property you're developing. So, uh, if you're putting in a port, uh, there's one there, truck terminals, industrial, uh, goes down to quite a few different classifications. Warehousing, residential, single-family, detached, all these types of different properties, lodging, considerate. And those will, uh, where that comes into a play is in the vehicle unit miles, right? Whichever of these types of properties you are, will then select a certain number of vehicle unit miles, based on the property and the base of how big it is. So, if you picked up, um, let's say we're gonna, Joe, do you just pick it, or does it? Doesn't seem to be pulling it into the, works for the rest of you guys, but then, you would, uh, so I was trying to select something there that, so they could see it, but, uh, and not showing up. And then you pick them. It may be the, up here, that's what you need, enable editing, editing, I think that's our problem, sorry.
And it's not showing up on the screen anyway, so.
Yeah. Oh, it's not showing up up there?
So on the roadway impact fee calculation, on the number of units you're putting, how many vehicle miles it's, it's gonna take to, uh, to develop that future road, or, or that they're gonna?
So that, so say Fodry is a five-lane road, and, and it, it relates to a certain amount of traffic volume that it should handle. And so you're putting in a, a, a large apartment complex like there is up there. The number of, so you say it's an apartment complex here, and it'll ask you to. here, and it'll ask you the number of units. So I think that one has six hundred units or something. So you put that in there, the, um, there's a background calculation that says an apartment, a, a one apartment unit will add up to certain amount of vehicle mile demand. And so it could be two, it could be six. I don't wanna tell you the number because I don't know offhand, but, and then it'll multiply that times the number of units. And that will come up with the fee that you should, should be, or that you're going to be assessed. Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry about that. Uh, then as you go down, the water impact, these are much simpler. So you're, you're putting in a meter, or you're putting in two or three meters, and you're putting in a certain size meter. And so it's, it's all based on meter size, and the number of them you apply will be multiplied by the unit cost for that. So, uh, that, they're easier because, uh, a water meter, three-quarter inch, is expected to handle a certain amount of demand. And if you try to water a big, big yard off a three-quarter inch meter, you may have trouble. So obviously, it's not gonna make as much demand for you as a two-inch meter would. So, and wastewater's the same. It's generally based on water. If you get an irrigation meter, the wastewater fee will not be charged because you're not, you're not putting that water to your, uh, to your sewer. The next two, uh, slides basically are some example comparisons that we ran between Odessa and Midland. Midland has four service areas where we have three. And so the first one is a tennis facility that, that was being, uh, I think's actually going on. But you will see the assessments. So if they, if that tennis facility were to happen in, in Area One, its assessment would be one hundred, just under one hundred and seven thousand dollars. If it was happening under Area Two, it would be about sixty thousand dollars. And under Area Three, it, one and three have the same basic assessments for roadway, so it's the same. Midland's top fee was about a hundred and twenty-six thousand. Their lowest would've been about ninety thousand. And it's a fair-sized, uh, tennis facility. It's not a small one, I don't, um, I think, but anyway, that's my understanding. The next one is an exercise facility comparison, similar type of information. The status of the funds is the, is the next one here. And so this was, uh, as of last month, this is the last assess, the last, last month. And so these are how many permits have been issued under each type of category, and the fees that have been received under each of those categories. The only place that these funds have been used is out of roadway Area Three, and we've used seven, or we pulled seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand for Fodry. And that's, so far, those are the only fees. And that's the only project that's currently ongoing. Well, Line Q is on, is, uh, one of the projects too, but we haven't pulled any of these fees for Line Q. We've been using up the Pioneer Funds on that. And the next one has resources, uh, where you can, and I even have some of Midland's, uh, websites, and then questions for any of us. Anytime y'all wanna talk to us about it, we're happy to, happy to try and let you know, and, uh, however you wanna look at it.
Council, any questions?
Tom, let me, let me ask a question. We visited not too long ago with a, on a couple of projects.
Yes, sir.
Um, and so where are we having, in the community, where are we having the breakdown? Is it with the engineers that are not communicating with their customers? And then the customers coming in, that we're explaining the fees to them, again, a case of the red ass that come back and they cool down, and they call back, you know, that, you know, I experienced that on a couple of cases.
Sure, sure, yes.
Uh, so...
I think initially, and Joe may be able to help me more on this. I think he talks to him a lot more often than I do. Uh, but I think initially, when the first occurred, the engineers probably weren't as fully familiar with it and weren't able to convey it as well to the clients.
The local ones?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, now, impact fees are very, as you're, as you're indicating, Mayor, impact fees are a very common, uh, practice throughout the country, but very much in Texas. Texas was actually the first state to enact, impact fees. But, um, uh, but still, when you look at the number, I mean, it's, um, any, any amount we pay nowadays is always too much, you know? And I'm not trying to minimize it, right? I mean, I'm not. But, um, these numbers don't necessarily look small. If you're building a, a tennis facility and you see a hundred thousand dollars of contribution for a tennis facility, that might not be something that you've thought of before, especially if you haven't ever developed one in an impact fee area. But the fees here would not be uncommon in many places. In fact, some cities adopted much higher rates than we have. But their, their development potential and different things are, could be entirely different. But, um, but I think that's part of it. Um, one of the things that does, did happen, I think in one of our, uh, discussions, was that sometimes, say, when it comes to water meters, um, a person might think they need a, a, a big water meter. And actually, they don't need a, that big a water meter. And if you, we can sit down with you and go through the calculation. We need to try and find the optimal size water meter for you and that type of thing. We won't tell you what your water meter needs to be because it's really not appropriate for us to say, you only get this, or you should have that. But we can try to work out scenarios. One of those, it was, I think we had a, a, a facility that was going in, and it was, um, say it was a twenty-five-hundred-square-foot facility, and really only part of the facility was gonna be developed at this time. It was only gonna be using, say, fifteen hundred square feet or a thousand. We had the whole facility classified as, um, let's say it was a doctor's complex or something like that, or it was retail. I don't recall personally. And, um, when they came in and they said, well, right now, we're only building or using this portion of the facility, then we could classify the other part of the facility as a warehouse, and that would cost you less. And so we worked with them to try and do that. But, um, there, yes, Mayor, it can be, I think, I think it can be some sticker shock there, and, uh...
Yeah. I mean, well, we, we dealt with the one doctor. I can't remember in twenty-one or twenty-two that was building a dentist, was it a dentist facility?
Yeah, they're on Eighty-seventh Street.
Eighty-seventh Street, remember that? And so the thing is, is that they weren't informed. It was an additional forty thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
They weren't informed by the engineer. And, uh, and so, you know, we, we, so here, I guess this is a question. So in the two instances that been involved, it was a lack of communication from the engineer to the, the customer. When you guys sat down with them, they said, you know, the, y'all started making recommendations, brought that, that price down. So the question is, if the engineers are not communicating, what can we do as far as an organization? Do we need to bring them in? Do we need to send them something? Do we put something together as far as a checklist? Say, hey, these are things that you need to be aware when you come to us to bring your plat? I don't know.
You must.
I said, but, but, you know, the thing is, is that, I mean, I know it's not our, your responsibility to...
Oh.
But you, you, you guys have said something. And it says, look, when you look at the national guys, when you look at the big retailers, when you big, look at the big home builders, there's not an issue. They know this is part of, because they deal with it everywhere else. It's the locals. And it seems like the customers are getting mad, but it's their engineers that are not communicating.
Right.
You know, in this one particular one on Fodry, I think they were bringing in a six-inch water line. He said, why do you need something so big? That was industrial, right?
Yes, sir.
You guys reduced it down, brought the impact fees. They were happy.
Yes, sir.
And so how do we, how do we do that to help, you know, to help you guys? And we're still gonna get the calls.
Yeah.
And we're still gonna, the, the guy that, that one met, that met with Farah, he started eighteen. By the time, it was like a car salesman. By the time he got home, it was down to seventy-five. He called, he was mad. He goes, why didn't I start there? I said, I don't know. And so, um, they said, well, why can't I have something on the forehead? Well, I didn't have any answers. I wind up talking to Farah. She told me, this is what we went through. I said, okay, that makes sense. The guy paid it. He was happy, but not before he blew a gasket. And in the end, he was happy, but he just wanted that explanation on the forehead. I don't have an answer of how we do that unless we, but if we do a checklist, I don't know if that's possible. Doesn't mean it's gonna solve it.
True.
And, uh, you know, we've talked about it in Development Services, but it seems like the local guys are not the ones that are researching it. Two, they're communicating to their customers. Well, yeah, it was the city council. I don't know when they passed. It looks like they did it right now. And that's another case, because we've had this in place. We started discussing it, and two years it's already been in place.
Twenty-one, yeah.
You know, so when does the learning curve stop? Or does it ever stop?
Yes, sir.
And so, you know, this is, uh, our way of trying to find a way to communicate with the small and the mid-level. Uh, it's not the developers. We're finding it, it's the engineering.
Yes, sir.
And how do, how do we communicate with these guys?
Those are, those are good points and good suggestions, too. And, and it is our responsi- I, I think that you're, you're being kind to us, but it is our responsibility to try and help them too, I think. And, uh, I do think, um, perhaps a guidance document that tells them what im, what factors impact quite a bit, like your meter size. Make sure they understand that a meter size has a major impact on that. That's your, um, type of roadway and how much use you have. Uh, that may be as a checklist or, and as, and as, or a paragraph guide type document. And the local engineers, there's, there's, there's several of them, but there's not a whole lot of them. And hopefully, uh, we can communicate with them directly too, and, and, and that type of thing, but we can try to...
Because a lot of times they're coming in, they're over engineering these, these developments.
Yes, sir.
And then when they come in, the impact fees, and they're high.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, and so it looks like, you know, we're, we're, it, it makes it appear like we're, we're, we're trying to rake them over. Well, you know, we're, we're applying the metrics to what you guys are, are engineering, putting in this plat.
Yes.
So, you know, on the other hand, we're basically saying, uh, we got community members are basically saying is that because we have the impact fees, we're discouraging development. I, I don't think that's really happening. There can be a perception, I can understand that that may be occurring. But we have people coming wanting to build and be located in Odessa, Texas. And so you just look at the permits. And so there's not a deter, I think there's a communication and a learning curve that we have to get to. And, uh, you know, I don't wanna spend a whole lot of time on it, but, you know, in the end, they have to be responsible. You know, they're over engineering a lot of this stuff.
Yes.
And so I think in the end, we've dealt with, you guys have dealt with a few that's really worked out pretty well. But there's been delays, and those delays cost money because you go from one interest point to the other. And when you're dealing with three points, four points, and now you're double, I think it's very expensive. Now, that right there is, is what deters, uh, development. So if we can speed it on our part and find any way to communicate. Farah's been doing a good job. Her name came up a lot of times. And everybody said, but she was real nice.
She's the better face of our office, I bet.
She was real nice, yeah. And she, she's had to deal with the majority of this. And so, um, and...
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So a couple of, of builders have asked me and talked to me, and, and they say, we're being double billed. So when I ask, how are you being double billed? They'll say, we'll be in charge for impact fees and our water taps. And so I, I don't have an answer for them to them because I don't get into that, that side of it. But can, can you answer that question? So what you would say to them? Do I send them your direction, or, I mean, is it two different fees? Maybe a checklist would help of some sort?
We would be happy to discuss that with them. And again, and the, the major difference there is impact fees are only for major infrastructure. So you're talking big lines, big water tanks. Your service lines are considered, everybody has to have their own service line and has to pay their own fees for service lines.
So again, the perception is just not correct.
Right.
We're collecting, we're collecting fees for that big, major, uh, Line P, Line Q. We're collecting, um, monies for anybody that's feeding into Fodry. So they're all participating in, uh, the cost of that.
Yes, sir.
This all goes back to the taxpayer. In the end, the developers don't eat the cost. They pass it forward to, uh, to, you know, to their customers.
My answer is to develop in District One.
Better.
Well, I'd be glad to share some of mine with you because I had one guy, you know, over at...
Come on over, we'll take you.
Yeah, we'll, you know, that, that, I got together, I had one guy that was so hot, you know, he had a three-million-dollar project, it's a hundred and eighty-thousand-dollar fees. So he said, but we never knew about him. And this, you know, and then the year of moratorium, well, his plat wasn't done before the deadline, before the exemption period, and his engineering firm just totally missed it. And, and, so I went and got all the documentation, every meeting that they were invited, his engineers were invited to. You know, the one we had over at the, it, where it was, over on, uh, at Floyd Gwynn.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, but I told him, I said, you, you know, you need to be taking this up with your engineer. It's, it's not new, it's a year old. So it's just, it's a lack of communication. And I, I, you know, if, if I were, back when I was in business, if I wanted to surprise a customer like that, or a client like that, I'd, I'd have been fired.
You hate to find out that late in your process of your financial...
I had a stack of documents, Tom, this tall.
Yeah, yes, sir.
I took over to them.
It, it's all been happening, and, yeah.
He said, I wanna see them. Never heard from them again.
Well, we'll be happy to try and find some...
We did our job, or you guys did.
Thank you. But we'll, we'll, we'll do, uh, work on some guidance document, maybe checklist type thing. Um, the checklist thing is a, is a great idea as well, but sometimes it gets so, impact fees aren't really related specifically to taps, so that checklist, but we may, um, we'll, we'll see if there's something we can do.
What we're gonna try to do is, we're trying to, since we have the new communications department, um, we're gonna try to find a way to get this, get the word out.
True.
I don't know how yet, we're gonna do it yet, but, um, but we need to have some form of education, that this is not a new ordinance. This has been in place two years. We did have the moratorium. Uh, this is basically to help the taxpayer and the budget as we continue to develop, is to pay for the major water distributions that were going in this Line P, Line Q, Fodry. These are tier areas that we're responsible for, aside from the six-minute we do annually. And so we need help. And so this is trying to take it off the backs of the, uh, of the established residential. This is going from having Zone One and Two to pay for Three and Three for paying One and Two, and keeping the money in the area.
Yes, sir.
And so this is another misconception that this is going on. And so we make, we're making it equitable. We're making it equitable for the community, wherever the development is, the investment is, the impact fees that are being, uh, collected are staying in that area. And this is the most fairest system that we can put together. Thing is, that we have to do a better, uh, job of communicating that. And that, that's on us. And so we'll, we'll, we'll get there. And so we'll try to relieve you guys. Farah, you're doing a good job. Like I said, your name is brought up more than, and, but you've been doing a good job recently. You're real nice.
I couldn't get her to come here, prepare and do the presentation, but we're working on it.
So, you know, in two instances, you know, her name came up, and they said, oh, but she was nice about it. And I said, okay, you know, and so, but the thing is, you guys are getting the job done. But somehow, some way, uh, some of these engineers are failing their customers, and they're getting stuck with a bill. We get, we get chewed out. We explained it to them. We have to do a sit-down. It hasn't, hasn't happened a lot, but nonetheless, it's happened.
True.
But you were right, you know, and we started looking at it. Wasn't the majors, it's all local, small. And they have this perception that the city's trying to not allow the small developer to flourish. Well, that's not the case.
We don't wanna do that.
We don't, we definitely don't wanna do that. We wanna encourage that development. It's happening, but we need to find a way to speed it up of all possible, to save them on the, on the points that they're borrowing on, so.
Yes.
Questions? Council, do we have any more questions? You know, or direction? You wanna, you don't wanna hear more about it? Good?
We do have, uh, so semi-annually, we're required to have the SEAC committee meet and give them an update, and have them discuss any things that they might wanna look at, that you might wanna look at. So that's happening March thirtieth.
Okay.
And then, um, uh, perhaps we'll try and set up, uh, uh, we can try and set up something where the engineers come in and sit down with us. Uh, we can, we could do something like that as well.
Talk to them, and go, say, guys, it's been in two years, man. What is it that, you know, we can, you, we can help you to communicate to your customer that this is coming? And so, they'll always over, over-engineer it, with more money for it, but I understand. All right, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Seeing that there is no more business, uh, before this council and this work session, do I have a motion by Councilmember Swan? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Thompson. All in favor, indicating by saying aye. All opposing, indicating by saying nay. Motion passing unanimously at nine oh seven. We are adjourned. Be careful going on.